Mr. Chair, I just got an email from Commissioner Lethen. She's having difficulty with her computer, so she'll join us momentarily.
That's fine. Thank you, Pamela. Just letting you know when everybody's here, we're ready to start.
Will do.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, you have a quarrel. You can start the meeting.
Thank you. All right. Good evening and welcome to the March 16th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. For all of you attending virtually, thank you for joining us. Please note that we want to hear from you. If you're in the audience and you would like to address the commission during public comment for the item on the agenda, there are two options. For those of you online using Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand button at the bottom of the screen. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted and given three minutes to address the commission. If you are joining us by telephone, you may address the commission by pressing star nine. When it's your turn to speak, you will be unmuted and you again will be given three minutes to address the commission. Please note, you may only speak once per agenda item. Okay, Pamela, roll call, please.
Madeline, go ahead.
Chair Biassodi.
Here.
Vice Chair Harmon.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Lethen.
Here.
Commissioner Madden.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
All present, except for Mary Lou Johnson.
Okay, thank you. Madeline, can we get the flag, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes.
Thank you. And Commissioner Harmon, would you be so kind as to tell ladies and the pledge, please?
Certainly. As soon as it's displayed. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Harmon. Item one is the approval of the minutes for February 2nd and February 16th. So we'll start with February 2nd. Do we have a motion or comments?
I have a comment, if Mr. Chair, if I may. There's no comment on the February 2nd minutes before the February 16th minutes under the first item, item 48. The motion and the vote tally should read 3-0-2, which will reflect three yeses, zero nays, and two abstains.
Thank you. All right. So let's move back to February 2nd for the moment. And do we have comments or a motion from the commission?
I make a motion. We approve the minutes of February 2nd.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Lethen. So we have a motion and a second for February 2nd. All those in favor? Oh, actually, we need a roll call, I'm sorry.
Chair Biassodi.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harmon.
Aye.
Vice Chair Lethen.
Aye.
Sorry, Commissioner Lethen. Commissioner Madden.
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson. Five zero, minutes pass.
Thank you. And then we'll move to February 16th. Either a motion or comments.
Again, I make a motion. We approve the minutes of February 16th.
Thank you. We have a second?
I would second as long as we're approving as amended.
Commissioner Morgan, was that as amended?
As amended, sorry, yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so all count vote, please.
Chair Biassodi.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harmon.
Aye.
Commissioner Lethen.
Aye.
Commissioner Madden.
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson. Five zero, minutes pass.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item two. Public comments for items not on the agenda. Once again, for Zoom users, please use the Raise Your Hand button. And for anyone on the phone, please use star nine. Madeline, do we have any public comments?
We do not, Chair.
Okay. Should we wait just a teeny bit? And Pamela, do we need a roll call to close that?
No, we're okay.
Okay. Madeline, any hands?
Nope.
Okay, let's go ahead and close that. We'll move on to item three, conflicts of interest.
Mr. Chair.
Yes?
We do have a introduction of the city of San Bruno Police Chief under the public comments.
Oh, okay.
And I see Police Chief Johansson is patiently waiting in there. With us.
All right, Chief, would you like to speak and introduce yourself and say hello?
Sure, thank you very much. Thank you for having me. I'll only take a couple of minutes. First, I want to start by apologizing for the fact that I've just turned my first year and sitting in the chief's chair, and this is the first time I am attending and introducing myself for the Planning Commission. Obviously, the best kept intentions, as they say, right? I had hoped to meet with all the different boards, commissions, and committees. A, to reflect my appreciation for all that you do on a voluntary basis to keep the business of the city running. B, to make sure that I formally introduced myself and made my contact information available as a source of support for all of that work in the coming months and years. I'd hoped to do that right when I sat in the chief's chair. And a little bit of a baptism by fire, if you will, right? Coming directly into a global health pandemic and civil unrest. And we could probably go on for hours talking about the list of difficulties and challenges that 2020 presented for all of us. So I guess better late than never, but nonetheless, I do apologize. And I hope you don't believe that it reflects any lack of appreciation for the work you all do. I really sincerely am so appreciative of all the boards, commissions, and committees because, as I say, you know, I get paid to do what I do. And you all are volunteering your time to make a real serious contribution to the way that the city ends up and the direction that we head in. So the real purpose of coming here tonight was just to kind of make sure that you're aware of who I am. Give you a little bit of real quick background and then really save some time in case there's any questions that you all have for me that I can address in this environment. And then again, to make sure that I think Pamela and Madeline will be able to share my contact information with all of you following the meeting so that if you need to reach out, you can. I'm cognizant of the fact that as the police chief, I'm the head of the largest department in the city. And so even if only by that virtue, we do have a tremendous volume of resources. A lot of officers and staff that can do multiple things. And so if we can be of any service to the commission and making sure that things get done when you need staff to do things, we're happy to step up in whatever role we can to provide those resources and support, whether it's videography to put together things that you guys might want to do as a group or whether it's community outreach, you know, we're a 24/7 shop and the only one in the city. So if you need help with things, please, please, please feel free to leverage us and to reach out. My background, real quickly, is I come to you by way of the San Diego Police Department, albeit a very long time ago. I've been a police officer with San Bruno for over 15 years now. Very, very happy to be in San Bruno. Kind of a weird place to land, people might think on the surface. I'm born and raised Southern California kid, went to the University of San Diego, met my wife there, got married there, had kids there. But strangely enough, my wife's family is 60-plus years in San Bruno. And so even when I first met her, I was up in San Bruno quite frequently. It was kind of a natural move for me to look there first when we wanted to relocate to the Bay Area. And I could not possibly be happier with what the city has provided for me and my family. I could work here another 30 years and not give back half of what it's given to me. So very, very pleased to sit at the helm of the Police Department, very fortunate to have followed Chief Ed Barberini into that role, who did a really exceptional job of putting the department on the right path and really of kind of setting the standard. So all I have to do is come in and not mess it all up. We have a lot of really good people working at the Police Department. I think I'd be remiss if I didn't mention at least that this past year has certainly had a large call out for police reforms ranging from, you know, relatively simplistic changes in the way we conduct business day to day all the way to defunding and the elimination of police departments. And I think that I've been very fortunate that much of the more aggressive language has not been in San Bruno. I'd like to think it's largely because of the partnership between the community and the Police Department that's been longstanding and the level of trust that exists there. But I hope you know that we won't stop earning that trust one contact at a time. We're very much committed to doing so. And I hope you're rested easy in knowing that the vast majority of the real, serious, legitimate reforms that have been called for in this past year have long been in place in your Police Department. I think that there are a lot of departments across this country that are way, way behind in things that just seem like such common sense. But please know that that's not the case in San Bruno. Concepts like de-escalation and liaising with other expert services like clinicians to deal with mental health calls and counselors to deal with domestic violence. I mean, these are things we've been doing for a very long time. And we do them day in and day out. And we will continue to look for ways to be better and improve. But please know that we're on the cutting edge. We made a conscious decision in this state to professionalize law enforcement back in the 70s for good reason. And I think that we benefit from that. Again, we can always be better, but we're in a good space. So with that, I will stop my long-windedness and take any kind of questions you might have for me.
Thank you, Chief, and welcome. I know you've been here for a long time, but welcome to the chief's seat here in San Bruno. Any of the other commissioners like to make a comment? No? All right. Well, thank you for joining us, sir.
Thank you very much. Again, please take that contact information. Don't hesitate to use it. Happy to help however I can. And thank you very much for the work you do.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good night. Thanks, Pam.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll close public comment then, and we'll move on to item three, conflicts of interest. Is there anyone with a conflict this evening?
No.
No, I'm not seeing any. All right. In that case, we'll move on to item four and 4A, which is 185 Acacia Avenue. To request for an architectural review permit to allow a residential addition that would increase the overall floor area of a single-family residence by more than 1,000 square feet and would require more, I'm sorry, that would be greater than 3,000 square feet per section 12200.07, San Bruno Municipal Code, and for a use permit per San Bruno Municipal Code of 12230B.1. Staff report, please.
Good evening, commissioners. My name's Brandon. Just joined the staff, the CEDD staff, on Monday in my assistant planner position. So this is my first Planning Commission meeting, so please bear with me as I figure it all out. So as the Chair introduced, we are reviewing the staff report for 185 Acacia, a use permit and architecture review permit. As stated, the architecture review permit is to increase a single-family residence by more than 1,000 square feet, and it would be greater than 3,000 square feet. And the use permit will exceed the existing floor area by 50% and exceed the permissible floor area. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approves both of these permits based on the findings and the conditions of approval found in the staff report. This is exempt from CECL based on existing facilities. So the current lot that this house sits on is 7,500 square feet. And the current home is a two-bedroom, one-bathroom, one-car garage home of 2,223 square feet of gross floor area. And all the houses in this area are of similar architectural style. All the surrounding land uses to this are single-family residential. The Architecture Review Committee, consisting of Commissioners Lethen, Biassodi, and Madden, did review this project at the February 11th, 2021 meeting. There was discussion and comments from the public about certain window styles from the commissioners. And from the public, there was discussion about the height. However, the committee declined to ask for any modifications and forwarded both permits to the Planning Commission with no additional recommendations. Legal notices were sent out on March 5th. And to date, there have been no public comments received about this project. So this project would include a major interior remodel. There will be additions to the basement, the first floor, and the second floor. And this will bring the existing home from 2,233 square feet to 3,611. This would include large combining kitchen and dining room, living room, five bedrooms, two and a half baths, and a laundry room on the first floor. And on the new second story, there would be a new master bedroom and bathroom. The existing one-car garage will be converted to a two-car garage, which will provide the required two parking spaces that the municipal code asks for. And the project does utilize materials and practices that reflect the San Bruno Residential Design Guidelines. The tables here of requirements and conditions are here, which you can review, as well as the table below, which breaks down the square footage showing the increase from 2,223 to 3,611. And the analysis shows that, sorry about that. The analysis shows that houses in this neighborhood are of similar style with multi-stories. And there are several that have had additions to them. Now, this house itself provides second-story setbacks and other articulation to minimize its mass and size so that that will fit in with the neighborhood better. So the architect has proposed a variety of these design features, such as facade articulations and varied setbacks that will help it not stick out so much in the neighborhood. And for the use permit, despite the increase in floor area and the exceeding of floor area standards, it does not exceed lot coverage. And as stated before, it utilizes residential design guidelines standards such as facade articulations, setbacks, roof overhangs, and window treatments, especially on the second floor, so that privacy concerns are minimized. And there will be a variety of landscaping that is done, including a variety of drought-tolerant and California native plants. We can see further in the plans that here is the rendering that the architect has of the home. And there are, further in the plans, a variety of... Sorry, it takes these PDFs a long time to load. There are front elevations here detailing the home along with its different design treatments, facade articulations. So staff does recommend that the architecture review permit and the use permit are approved with the findings that this project will not... Sorry, let me go back here. The project will meet all the findings of the use permit and an architectural review permit. And we do conclude that we recommend that the commissioners approve both permits. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Brandon. Do we have any questions for Brandon from the commission?
I have one concern there is that the windows on the second floor in the master suite look quite small. They look like about two foot by two foot. And I'm just worried about, would they be large enough to allow escape in the event of a fire?
I believe that there are some other windows in the master suite as well. But I do believe the architect is here as well in the audience if he would like to address the question.
Mr. Chair, so before we open a public hearing, Commissioner Morgan, we will make sure that the windows are adequately sized for the building code for fire exitting. But we could definitely ask the architect to confirm as well.
Yeah, no, other than that, I think it's a huge improvement on the existing dwelling. And I think the layout is much more feasible and much more sensible. I think it's a huge improvement, and I like it. That was the only concern I had.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. Any other questions for staff? Okay. Thank you. So I guess we'll move to open up public comment. Is the applicant here or wanting to speak?
Chair, we have the applicant and the architect. And I will allow Jared Kukendall, Architect, Applicant, to speak. Jared, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, great. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Jared Kukendall and I'm the project architect. On behalf of the Uniatt family, we just want to thank you all for your contribution to the San Bruno community and your time to review our project. I did just briefly want to introduce things, if I may. Brendan and Britta and their four young children have been making do with their two-bedroom, one-bath house for a while now. Understandably, the last year at home has been an extra challenge. In addition to the lack of space, there are some major issues with the house as it is. The front door is hidden on the far side of the home, making it somewhat unapproachable if a visitor can find it at all. They've actually had visitors come to their back door rather than the front door. So they just didn't know where to go. There's no interior connection between the living space and their one-car garage. So bringing little kids and groceries home or even just trying to do the laundry involves a trek around the house between the garage and the back door. So we really wanted to address these issues and ensure the families' needs were met while still being respectful to the neighborhood. The additional space is provided, as staff mentioned, through kind of an articulated horizontal and vertical addition. The second floor is set back and kept as low as possible. In fact, the top of the new ridge line is only about six feet higher than the existing home. So we feel like that's consistent with the neighborhood. The interior stairs provide access to the new two-car garage. Front door and porch is shifted to the front, more consistent with the neighborhood. So with all that in mind, we just feel like despite its size, the proposed design fits naturally in Acacia Avenue. The family is committed to setting down roots here in San Bruno and hope they'll be able to proceed with their forever home. Have you addressed any questions? Commissioner Morgan, you asked about the windows. There are egress windows at the back facade facing the rear yard. So light ventilation and emergency escape are all addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions for the applicant? No, I'm not seeing any. Okay. Would the owners like to speak? Madeline, are the owners here with us?
We do have the owner. I'm going to bring him in the room to speak.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Brendan, can you hear us? Brendan, you're on me.
Yes, can you hear us?
Yes.
Sorry. Thank you for having us. I just wanted to say we're very excited to get this project going. We love being in San Bruno. I'm a Bay Area-born and raised. My wife isn't from here, but we love being in San Bruno. We can't wait to have more than one bathroom for our four kids. One other thing that will improve the parking. Currently, we cannot use our garage at all for parking as the existing floor joists have sagged a bit. So I had to install a reinforcement beam down the middle of the garage to keep it from sagging anymore. So as soon as we get going, we'll be able to use inside parking instead of just outside parking.
Thank you. Was there anything else?
I'm sorry?
Was there anything else for the commission?
No.
Okay. Do we have questions? No?
I just wanted to congratulate you on the construction project. And it has come up in previous meetings. People have talked about like, oh, why would people need, you know, a house with six, seven bedrooms or whatever it is? And I always feel like, look, I'm the fourth of five kids myself. Big families are out there. And thank you for vindicating. You're a brave couple.
My dad's one of 13 and my mom's one of seven, so we have a long way to go.
No.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Madeline, do we have any hands raised from the public?
We do not, Chair.
I'll announce it once again. For those Zoom users at home, if you'd like to address the commission at this point in time on this project, please use the Raise Your Hand button. And for those of you at home, please use star nine. Or on the phone, please use star nine. And we'll give you just a few seconds here and see if anyone raises their hand.
No hands raised, Chair.
I see Commissioner Madden has his hand up.
Yeah, sorry for going out of turn. The owner mentioned their floor is sagging in the garage. I just wanted to ask the architect, is the new garage going to be slab-on-grade or is it a crawl space? Seems like the existing is a crawl space.
Yes, the existing garage is slab-on-grade, and the new garage will remain slab-on-grade. A good portion of the garage is sunk in basically basement. And so all that will be reviewed and addressed by the engineer. The floor joists that are sagging will also be reinforced, replaced as needed with the new construction.
So the floor joists are at the top of the garage door? Or the, because you said you're slab-on-grade, so I'm just trying to figure out where the sagging?
Yes, yes, the floor joists are the floor joists in between the garage and the existing main floor level. The ceiling joists.
Okay.
Ceiling floor joists.
So is there a foundation settlement issue happening? Is that why it's sagging or is the floor joists overloaded?
It's unclear if it's an issue with just a failed joist or there's no obvious sagging at this time. But again, we will have the engineer reviewing all of that and ensure that it's all addressed during the building permit phase.
Okay. Yeah, just, I'm a structural engineer, so just a word of advice. You may want to get a sales engineer if you suspect any slab settlements happening, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Madeline, once again, did anyone raise their hand during that construction?
No, Chair.
Okay. Can we get a roll call vote to close public comment?
Chair Biassodi.
Aye.
Chair, may we have a motion to close public comment?
Can we get a motion to close?
I make a motion to close public comment.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second.
Right. Chair Biassodi.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harmon.
Aye.
Commissioner Lethen.
Aye.
Commissioner Madden.
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan.
Aye.
Motion passes, five zero.
Thank you, Madeline. All right, at this time, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion or motion. Any comments, questions, or anyone have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Architecture Review Permit, AR 20-008, and the Use Permit, UP 20004, for 185 Acacia Avenue, based on Findings 1 to 6 and Conditions 1 to 13. I think it would be a huge improvement, speaking as one of a family of 10. I think it's a great job.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. Do we have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Commissioner Harmon. All right, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Chair Biassodi.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harmon.
Aye.
Commissioner Lethen.
Aye.
Commissioner Madden.
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan.
Aye.
Five zero, motion passes.
Thank you. And then, as always, there's a 10-day appeal period. Let's see, item five, items from staff.
Yes. I can't believe we're getting to my item already and halfway, you know, 30 minutes into the meeting. I only have one thing, which is I'm asking for volunteers for the April Architectural and Review Committee. This will fall on April 15, the text date.
I would be available.
I see two hands, Commissioner Madden and Vice Chair Harmon. One more? Thank you, Chair. All right. Can I have one more backup just in case? All right, I got everyone. Thank you. Bye, hi. Thank you.
All right, very good. At this time, we're going to have item six, which is public comments not on the agenda. Before we adjourn, if any members of the public wish to address the commission, once again, Zoom users, raise your hand, and for those on the phone, star nine. And we'll give you just a minute to make that happen if there's anyone out there. All right.
No hands.
No hands, thank you.
No hands, uh-huh.
Then we will move to item seven, items for members and subcommittee reports. Is there anyone with anything to report? Kelly, I understand you went before City Council and represented us. Thank you very much. Would you like to report on that? Would you like to report on that?
They received my report graciously, and, um, I mean, I think most of us were here for the majority of the year, and, um, yeah, I think you guys kind of all know everything that, that we did together, but, um, it was nice to see it all summed up, and the outlook for 2021 is, it's going to be a rigorous year, and, uh, there's some, some fun projects, some fun projects coming our way.
Very good. Well, thank you again for your efforts, Kelly. Commissioner Morgan, you had your hand up there a moment ago.
I just want to wish everybody a happy St. Patrick's Day tomorrow.
Thank you, and the same to you and your family.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Anyone? All right. With that, we will move to item eight, which is adjournment until April 20th at 7:00 P.M. Thank you, everyone. Have a pleasant...
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.